Member of PEC and also the ECO Bank. Staff member, honourable members of the committee, member of corporate enterprise, also member of the ECO. Number one, member of the PEC, also of the corporate enterprise. Number two, member of the ECO. I'm honourable ECO, I'm a man of the society, I'm also a servant of the government. So, member of the ECO bank and also of the ECO.
My name is Dr. Fakros Anjai, paper of the public and finance accounts of the ECO.
Good morning, Mr. Chan, sort of a specialist. Good morning, I'm Maurice, is the original ECO, National Audit Committee.
Good morning, Mula Anjai, from National Audit, ECO.
Good morning, I am Bob Karbaji, ETO committee from the INH.
Thank you very much, now we go to Eco Bank.
Thank you, my name is John Niyaba, the management director.
Good morning, my name is Teresa Atupan, under here of legal and compliance agency.
Good morning. Good morning, my name is Francis Jasson, I'm here of corporate and investment bank.
That's all? Thank you very much. Clap for you, yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Here by a fan.
There by a fan, that's. Our speaker, truth. The voice truth. I'm a mother truth. So, have me go.
Thank you, now, we've completed item five, we're now going to item six. And the main item for that matter, that is meeting with the Eco Bank. The minimum of the Eco Bank is related to the parliamentary inquiry into the petroleum products of thirty-six thousand nine hundred fifty-three point six one four million dollars, valued at thirty million US dollar. Before us, we have the witness from Eco Bank and associated other underwriters. And Redul Shrebsar Gakokea will be those in the questioning, and when he exhausted the substantive questions. If any member has any question to ask, then later you'll be given the floor for supplementary questions. In the interim, we allow underwriters to take us through the questions, then from there the supplementary questions will follow. Over to you, underwriters, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chan, and thank you very much to all this number of people from Eco Bank. Now, the first question is about, how do you propose to, we're going to be questioned by Eco Bank. They want to put us to a question of Eco Bank, possible. Eco Bank has a bank of questions.
Yeah, Eco Bank, as a bank in Gambia, is part of the Eco Bank group, which about thirty-six countries operating in Africa. Eco Bank, Gambia, is licensed to provide banking services in Gambia, taking deposits and also taking payments on behalf of customers. But before then, we have to make sure that we onboard the customers, open accounts for customers, thank you.
Yes, you are legislating in the Gambia, you pay your customers, open accounts with them. Which kind of customers are you normally targeting?
I can get all customers from individuals to companies. So, obviously, I mean, anybody who comes, who's above eighteen years ago, I mean, let you open an account, open the accounts for the person.
Okay, when it comes to accounts, for money, why is this procedure, you know my text before, you open an account with them, as long as you open an account with you, what are your procedures?
Okay, so there are some requests for documents, and there is an account opening pack that is given to the person to complete. And then, so these are the documents, while we see the documents, we check for some basic information. The basic information, basically, what is on the ID card of the person, or any information that will help us to know the customer. So, the base would be the ID cards, and ID card give us information on the person, that's for individuals. And for companies who need the, basically, the company registration documents, the format of the company, board resolution, as well, you obtain. And we also get a ten, tax authentication number of the entity, and then we then review them. And then, once it is reviewed, it is normally reviewed by our compliance team, whether any of the names, as you said, with the company, is there any address information on them? When we check through the, I mean, we do all those checks, and we don't find any address information, then we go and then we go to the open account for the person or the company.
Um, thank you very much, and you made mention of corporate customers, as you already mentioned, that individually, you knew their ID cards, if they are known, I mean, for the request on them?
Yes, if they are known Gambia, or request for, so their ID cards. So, request for their ID cards as well, maybe if they are known Gambia, the person have a passport, request for the person's, I mean, passport. And then, if the person's, I mean, is, I mean, resident in Gambia, definitely the person have a resident permit, then all that is a mission put together, and then we then use that to open the account for the person.
So, it like, corporate customers can open accounts without being registered in Gambia, right or no?
So, corporate customers, yeah, you must be registered in, I mean, in Gambia, but then if you are, it depends whether you are international company, or you are, because of how business you are in, let me data to you first.
Then in Gambia, now we, we don't have Gambia.
Okay, so if it's registered in Gambia, if it's a dream business, I mean, Gambia, that or by the company, registered in Gambia, then we will get the registration of the company based on the Gambia registration documents.
Then we have to register on, you cannot open an account?
No.
We can't register on, no, not an opening? I mean, thank you very much, I mean, the thing also, only to verify, one moment, if you have verified the identity of the document, have you verified their authenticity, have they, have they verified them, that they are authentic, have you verified them?
Well, once, when the person is bringing the document, we ask you to bring the originals, we want to see the originals as well. So, once we bring them, we make sure that we, we bring out the copy, and then the originals, and then we then construct it to make sure that, I mean, the copy that you are giving us is the original that we have, then we then use that one to cooperate.
So, you only based on the original document, or the copy, and that's why you stop enough for the inquiries, whether it might also be friends in, in, in register, if somebody can have that, somebody, I mean, original, is authentic?
Maybe in other jurisdictions, maybe if I can share my thoughts on other jurisdictions, my experience, no, no, I mean, in other jurisdictions, because of, there are, there's a possibility of having online access to the national registration, the company registration portal, but here, we don't have that here, so we can't, there is no way of independently verifying the document that can be followed. Unless we get to a point where Gambia also has that system.
Um, can you please explain what's your KYC policy, know your customer policy, can you explain to us in brief?
Yes, so KYC, know your customer, is basically, after what, I mean, the economy is that, know your customer. So, if you are dealing with somebody, you get, you clean as much information as possible that you can get from the customer. When the person presenting or herself, we try to get the ID, look at the picture in the ID, to receive that, to make sure that the picture correspond with the person who was sitting in front of us. The name is there, and then, once we know that person, that's first of all, the identification, then the person will ask the person, okay, what, why are you opening an account, what's the source of funds for the account? Okay, then you, most, most of the time, you say, it is from my salary, okay, if it's salary, then like we get evidence of employment, you know that the person came fully employed. The person is doing business, that the business registration documents we have given idea, the person is doing business. The person will then give us an ID of how much he or she will be running to the account, then we use that one to check. And then, as I did mention earlier, we also have platforms, internal platforms that we use, to check the names, to see whether there is any address information on that particular name, whether it be an individual or be the company. If we check on the platform, and there's any address information, we do further checks, to show that, that address information that were made on the platform, on that particular name, is not, is not, is not related to the person that we are dealing with. Because sometimes people have more, I mean, similar names, someone may be called, I say, Fu Ali, you go to the platform, you see an address information, and I say, Fu Ali, somewhere, then you then have to, then you take further, to be sure that this is Fu Ali that we sent on the platform, is not the same Fu Ali that is sitting in front of us. So, we go that, we go further, we do all those checks.
So, when do you do this, this test, is it after opening or before opening, because, I mean, as you mentioned, when the customer comes into open, he submit all documents that is required by you, after submission, is there any proper waiting before the opening, or do you do the opening after do your, your preparation, before getting the money?
Yeah, we do the verity before we finally open the account, but account undergoes three stages, we start from the branch, then it goes through compliance, that the compliance, that's what it go those seconds, and then, if there's an issue, it goes back to the branch. If there's no issue, then proceeds to final account opening.
If a customer is introduced by your own staffs, do you know the normal procedures to do, as if they are in ABC, and you only stop based on the customer, you, 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 your, your, your staff, you give the customer to you, do you normally stop there, or do you normally go do the same normal procedure, common procedures?
We use the same.
Verify and do everything?
We normal, go through the normal procedure of verify and do everything.
In case there is a risk on customers, can you please tell, tell us, what are these person normally use?
Yes, so if there's a risk on the customer, then that means that you go further and do what we call the enhanced due diligence, the enhanced due diligence.
You are listening, you go for that, and do that, do your diligence and stop there?
No, the enhanced due diligence will require that, once you establish, because I know, and most of the time, it's like a relationship with a partner. You start the relationship, and as the relationship goes on, you try and gather as much information as the relationship goes on. But I know when they make sure that the initial basic checks are there, but if there's a high-risk customer, then as you open the account, then you then have to ensure that, if you can see of checking, or getting, trying to get additional information, you then, I mean, do more. To be monitoring the account, to look at whether there's any unusual activity on the account, there's any unusual activity, you call the customer, and then ask for further qualification.
And you made mention, my concern here is, in case this particular customer, or this particular company, after everything, you found that definite risk pool are involved in an activity that's connected, that is still in line with your banking policies, what do you normally do with that customer?
If it is not in line with our banking policy, we call the customer, and then we would then ask the customer to remedy the situation. If the customer is not able to remedy the situation, then we have to, I mean, I mean, sever the relationship. If the customer is able to remedy the situation, then we move on. There are times that customers are able to remedy the situation by virtue of the nature of the situation, so in that case, we have to explain to the customer that, please not your, I mean, it's not your fault, but we have to sever the relationship. So, there are times that some customers, maybe by virtue of the sanctions list, because we have some countries that have been sanctioned by various international organizations, so if you are from that country, and you are, I mean, Gambia, and you present your ID, and from that country, automatically, you cannot open the account, even if you open the account, and along the line, that country is listed as a sanctioned country, who have to then come back to you, and so, okay, your country has appeared on this list, so then, politely let you know, and then we sever the relationship.
Yeah, but still, I mean, in case there are any point in time where either one, you stop the account, or do you ask individual forms, or do you go further to allow a central bank to see, this particular customer, or this particular company, we are, we are, they is under a high risk, and we are suspicious of something, do you know that allow the central bank, or do you know that allow FIU on this issue?
Yeah, we have something called the STR suspicious transactions report, we have STR suspicious transaction reports. Yeah, so when we suspect a particular transaction, I mean, it's very serious in nature, that, in that case, we have to escalate and send a report to the FIU, for FIU to know that this is something that we suspect, we not have any, maybe, fair proof, where we, it's a suspicion, so we have to file that report, and STR, STR report on the FIU, and then FIU will then look at it, and then advise what you do, if any.
Oh, thank you very much, when it comes to your bank policy regarding to retention of customers' account opening documentation, what are the rules for your policies?
Yes, so, in terms of documentation, at the point where we are opening the account, we try as much as possible to get every document. There are times, some of the customers, okay, trying to get some document, but it's not ready yet, so we give you some time to make sure that you bring the document, and once we, once we get that document, once, then we manage to see how soon can get, bring us that document. Okay, for example, we all know that there are issues with getting ID cards from the authorities, so normally, those are issues, once, an issue that is beyond the customer's control, but then, is a national issue, who defied those documents, then once we get them, we retain them, monitor them, and then, if they have to be renewed, we get back to the customer, get them renewed. So, we retain documents as much as possible.
But in case of a customer who wasn't able to produce, for example, an ID card, and it hasn't been opened by the customer, can that customer access the account when this documentation are not properly, they are not all in place?
Okay, it depends on the kind of documents, for example, if you the case of an ID card, okay, why, for example, in Gambia, as we speak now, there are issues of getting ID cards from the system, from the authorities. So, in those instances, we noted that it's a general, I mean, problem within, I mean, the country, and therefore, we then use the person's, I mean, old ID card, for now, knowing about that, there is a general issue of getting new ID cards into the system, also alerting the authorities, it's okay, through central bank, it's okay, we have this, that problem, and this is how we are managing it, for now.
And for corporate customers, in case a person is in Gambia, for say, how do you manage with that person?
Uh, the person again, please.
If the person is in Gambia, and is a corporate customer, how do you manage with that person?
Uh, if it's a corporate customer, and the person is not a Gambia, you mean the, the corporate?
Pardon me, this means it's not a Gambia of the account, and currently, he is the one who authenticated you, I mean, if you draw an deposit of into the account, it's not, it's not, it's completed, what do you do with it, with the account, do you normally deposit it, or do you normally deposit it, or do you normally deposit it in the account?
Yes, so, if the person is not a Gambia, in that case, we have to ensure that the passport of the person is valid, it is not, I mean, because with that one, we cannot do anything if you, that the person does not have a passport, a valid passport, with that one, I mean, we don't actually, this is not we can do.
Yes, in case of the person that, I mean, that's the reason of the Gambia, because there are also, we need to know what is here, because not only the passport, we need to also know the address of the region, I can't go with my passport from, 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 from any other country outside the Gambia, and then that's the end, I might even have been three passengers moving with. Do you only do that on the passport, or do you know normally this, look at documents, for example, that are definitely in need in this country, like, a central bank, in case, it's not, it's not a central bank, do you know the register him? In Gambia?
Yeah, it depends whether that, non-Gambia, is resident in Gambia or not.
No, we have a company in Gambia, now, you know, normally if you open the company in Gambia, and when you open in Gambia, one of the passports, you know, of this country.
Yes. Yes, so, in that case, the resident director, the document must be full, must be complete, that's why we need to ensure that it's.
So, you're telling me now, that certain document, when they are missing, you can access to your account, or you can access to your phones, it's possible, when they are missing documents, and what, what, what time do you monitor them, before, 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 you say no to them? When they are missing documents, what is the time given before? Yes, the time given, after the missing documents are not submitted, or they are, I mean, or they are not submitted, what time do you normally give them for submission?
Normally, we give between, I mean, sixty days to ninety days.
Three months?
Yeah, but there are many time as to regularize your documents, normally, we look at, okay, what the turnaround time to get these documents out from the authorities.
So, within this period, they can withdraw, and they can deposit?
Yeah, they can deposit, by good in that period, you, you are monitoring account, critically, to ensure that there's no any, I mean, unusual activities on the account.
And you also can close the person?
Come again, please.
And also close your account in this period?
Yeah, you can close your account in this.
You can close your account in this period, individual can close their account in this period?
Yes, then you can close the account, that's all, because normally, we will have to actually initiate, if you don't provide it, we can ask you to close the account.
No, you know, you have already given a grace period?
Yeah.
I can be doing, there are certain things that are not right, where you are only in my account, and submitting the document that we are required by me to be submitting, during this period, within this three months, I, I prefer to close my account, and do with my money, what do you normally, do you know what the corresponding, if you had to go through a cost check, or you normally give him his, his money, and say that's the end?
But in that instance, we then have to verify the fund that have come in, before we let you close the account.
Thank you, I mean, how do you onboard international customers as Eco Bank?
Yes, so for international customers, let me say, somebody comes from another country, into Gambia, we need to ensure any person, first of all, find out what the person is coming to do when they come here, who come to work, or come to do business, then we have to ensure that you get the documents, and then start the process of account opening. And normally, we still insist on you, and I, I mean, full, I mean, the full complement of the documents that are needed to get the account opening.
So, you must go through this process? You must go through this process?
Then you must go through that process.
So, like, I was asking, in case of this international customer, you are in the end, you're going to go with you, and then, we communicate with the community, so, do you accept all the home before opening, or do you also give the normal grace period that you give to us, sixty to ninety days?
Yes, so we also give to them, if, but it depends whether they are the resident director or not, communicate then distinguish who the resident director of the company. But for the resident director, we need to ensure that the person provides the full complement of the documentation, if the person is not the resident director, then we then, we need to get somebody that can hold account trouble. So, that for the resident, I mean, for more, and that's what they need for the resident director to provide, I mean, the full complement of the documentation.
Do you know, Mr. Aru, I mean, Nana Kofi?
Uh, knowing them, by all the fact that they are, let me say, the company that we deal with, yes, but I don't know them physically, as in face to face.
You've never seen them before?
For Nana Kofi, no, for Oremas, I've met, I've seen him once or twice, that made my surprise.
He came to you as what?
Uh, he came to me as a customer of the bank, through one of the, I mean, companies that, that has our company as well.
He came to you as a customer, the person you represent?
Representing the company.
The company?
Yes, that's Apogi.
That's, 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 Aru, Aru, Nana, Kofi, Nana Kofi, and who was the name?
He had not met him, but he's with Optimate Beach.
And these two companies are registered with your bank?
Yes.
What is the application in those companies?
Uh, for Nana, Nana Kofi Amakon is a, is a shareholder, also a signature to the Optimate Beach accounts, that the primary account that we have in our books, for Optimate Beach.
And Aru?
So, all the bottom mask, or suppose, is also, I mean, appointed as a signature on the sub-accounts for Optimate Beach.
Are they the only sole signature, or they are supposed to be, or are they the same, or are they not supposed to be?
Uh, Nana is the, the sole secretary for the Optimate Beach account, and then, the sub-accounts, when the sub-account was operating, initially, it came in the form of Optimate Beach opening the account, and also opening the sub-account. And then, along the line, so at that point, it was Nana who was, I mean, the key, that they made, and they signature to on the primary account, and then, later on, Oremas came in as the signature to the, to the sub-accounts.
It's like, these are different accounts?
Yes.
There are different accounts from, from different company, or they were different accounts?
No, there are sub-accounts, and then the primary accounts, so Optimate Beach is the main account.
Optimate Beach is the main account?
The main, the primary account, yes.
Founded by who?
Represented by Nana.
By Nana?
Yes.
And the signature of it, or the thing you move again?
And then Nana, so Optimate Beach then opened sub-accounts.
Okay.
And then, in that sub-accounts, that's why they brought in Oremas Agi as signature.
But Oremas didn't open account with a different company name, or what, is it, are, or that, they have any accounts in, in Oremas, and been, been signed by all of Oremas?
Yes, so later on, Oremas Apogee opened another primary account, they opened, I mean, they. They opened, I mean, they registered and opened their own primary account in the name of Apogee. That's where Oremas then came in as the, uh, the signature on the primary set, and the second set of primary account that will open in the name of Apogee.
So there are also joint account by these two?
No, there's not a joint account.
By Apogee and then Oremas, I mean, they're, they're?
No.
They are all joint account?
There's not joint account.
They were also opening, based on their listing or their companies being?
No, so there are two things here, let me start from the Ultimate Beach opening the account. So Ultimate Beach opens an account in the name of Ultimate Beach. Nana being the signature of that account. And then the back of board resolution, an account was also opened. A sub-account, based on the board resolution, from Ultimate Beach, a sub-account was opened in the name of Ultimate Beach stroke Apogee. Stroke Apogee, that is a sub-account, that is the name of the sub-sub-account. That was opened, and then that was where the authorized signature on the sub-account was Oremas.
By the way, I would want to ask you to be this way, for the police, for these two accounts?
No, that's one, several accounts.
Yes, and then what is that account opened?
Oh, that was, uh, late last year.
When we started, on the date and the time?
I can't, sorry, it's sent in, uh, that's in June twenty twenty three.
His account was opened in June twenty twenty three?
Come again, let's have a look. Yeah, June twenty twenty three, yeah, so all the accounts were actually opened in June twenty twenty three. For Ultimate, the Ultimate Beach.
Ultimate was opened in June twenty twenty three?
June twenty twenty three, Ultimate Beach opened four primary accounts.
Okay.
Okay, and then four sub-accounts.
Four plus four, that's eight? Okay. All these accounts are in operation?
Uh, they are there, but they are not active, not all of them are active.
Among these eight accounts, who is, who is the signature?
Yes, so the first four, which are the primary account, the first four, which are the primary accounts, have Nana as the, uh, primary, that's the main signature.
Yes, the first four, who is the main signature?
Come again, please.
You said, I want, can you describe?
Yes, some say that the first four accounts here, they have been, I mean, eight accounts. Four of them in the name of Ultimate Beach. Yes, with Nana as the signature. And then four sub-accounts in the name of Ultimate Beach Apogee. Oremas as the, I mean, the, uh, signature to the sub-account.
It's like, Oremas, who was in the sub-account?
Yes.
Why, Kofi was, he seems to, all of them?
Exactly.
That's giving to that, it's eight?
Yes.
What are the process that you use before you open a sub-account? How do you start processing, you know, for you to open a sub-account?
Okay, so for the sub-account, uh, we will need instruction from the authority, I mean, the signatures or the board resolution from the company that opened the primary account. So the, uh, the board resolution for the company asking for additional account, and then the signature to the account, or on the primary account, also have to also add the authority to it. Open the sub-account for, I mean, for, I mean, for foundational business, yeah.
So then all these things were submitted before?
Yes.
So it's like, during the account opening, let me just push anything back. During the account opening, normally you open an account, after all the communication, you normally identify, it put that out to be identified as signatures. How many of them were identified among these accounts, how many of them were identified by the company?
Yes, so for the Ultimate Beach, uh, the company against Nana had the signature. For Gollinano, yes.
And the other one?
And then for the sub-accounts, the company, I mean, gave the authority to Oremas.
So when these two, these two companies came together to open this account, they gave the authority to, to be signing?
No, it's still Ultimate Beach.
After the shots, account was opened, who was the signature there?
The, yes, uh, Oremas, but still, still under Ultimate Beach, giving authority for accounting, opening the sub-accounts to be opened.
It was Ultimate Beach that gave? The authority you go for, for all of those accounts you go for?
Yes.
And then, A- A- Aremas who was the signature?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Chikochia, I think I can stop here, if there's any other person to ask, then we can continue. Based on that, I'm over it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we make the last, the first question of the statement. Just where the investigation has gone in place of this, before you move to another topic. The essence of the matter is that you want to pass information to answer that we are advanced. Before it's, please don't go to the order here that are not yet touched, okay? Before it's up. Uh, let's start from the rest in, and Sisi.
Yes, thank you very much, Chikochia. Uh, let me start from where you just ended. You've highlighted that there were instructions from Ultimate Beach to have Oremas as a signature to the sub-account. What was the line of instruction as far as that, this is a discussion?
Okay, so it will come in the form of a board resolution, instructing the accounts to be opened?
There was a board resolution that instructed for the opening of the sub-account, and Oremas being the signature?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, you've also highlighted about them opening this sub-account, the true name, that is the Ultimate Beach and Apogee. What does that represent? Because what I want you to assertate that, for Ultimate Beach is the registration of a company, and it's opening an account for that company. But what account does that sub-account represent? Ultimate Beach slash Apogee, what account does that represent? Is it just an account, or is it a company, or what? What does that represent?
Yes, at that point, still an account under Ultimate Beach. I mean, uh, because the company, we see it, I mean, quite a number of times, maybe somebody, somebody can open an account, maybe if Ali will open an account, and the later I can say, open another account for me, for maybe if Ali stroke, maybe Farafeni. Maybe if Ali wants to use that account for some transactions in Farafeni, so he wants to tag that account for something that he's doing in Farafeni. So in this instance, it was Ultimate Beach stroke Apogee. At that point, we as Ekobank didn't have much information on Apogee, so we didn't actually know much as to what Apogee is. It's only Ultimate Beach that knew what, uh, why they did that at that point. So we saw it as, I mean, so Ultimate Beach identified some transactions that they are doing, that's what we brought in. Uh, the sub-account.
Okay, you didn't know much about Apogee, but you know a little about this?
Yeah, Apogee was a company, uh, in our books, we knew Ultimate Beach.
From your last response, you said you didn't know much about Apogee during the time of opening of that sub-account. You didn't know much, much?
We didn't, I can't put it this way, we didn't know anything about Apogee, we know, we knew Ultimate Beach.
But you've had the name Apogee prior to that?
Prior to that, I had none. We didn't know much, and we didn't know Apogee.
Bringing up to the opening of this sub-account, you've never heard about Apogee before you opened that sub-account, just what you said?
Not from my head, no. We know, we know, I mean, Ultimate Beach.
So before you open a sub-account, before the board resolution came in for you to open a sub-account, you've never heard of Apogee before, and you've never dealt with them?
No, we know that was there. We're dealing with Ultimate Beach.
Okay, so to you, that sub-account most ways represents, the name Apogee, they have mentioned nothing?
Yes, that's at that time, it meant, I mean, there didn't go much was.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, uh, thank you very much, uh, M D. Uh, my first question is, uh, did you ever find any S T, uh, that is suspicion transaction or report in detecting with the Ultimate Beach and Apogee?
No.
You don't?
No, we've not, so far, we've not identified any, um, S T R activities on that account.
Yeah, what I'm saying, he said, he been in the whole the bank, ever find any S T R report in detecting with the Ultimate Beach and that of Apogee, so he said not. Yes, the other one goes is, uh, did you perform any additional duty there yet, uh, to the request for opening of this sub-account to Oremas, Eritrean national, to operate the sub-account?
Yes, honorably, with, with the, that's how can we able to actually get to know that his mother is, uh, a politician in Eritrea. And that's how can we go to actually classify, uh, his account as a political expose. Because normally, we have to dig and find out more about the person through that, and I did, we got that information, which, uh, wasn't, my face of it available to any person looking at the name, yeah, credit.
Now, uh, based on, based on, you know, did you notice, uh, and the, that the volume of transfers were carried out in this sub-account, and did you raise an alert based on the volume of account transfers and other issues in this account? Did you raise any alert under this effect?
No, we didn't raise any alert on it.
Why? Or does it mean maybe you are not much monitor in the account, or, uh, you won't see the problem, or an act that is not normal? Uh, not the primary account, but it's not a sub-account, is that normal?
Okay, let me put it this way, uh, because the sub-accounts and the primary account will always have the same customer identification number. Because they belong to the same, um, let me say, uh, let me say, control, I don't believe it, the same control, same company. So at that point, Ultimate Beach was opening the account, they gave us an indication that the transaction ordering was going in excess of thirty million dollars. And thirty million dollars with a company that's dealing in the petroleum industry is normal. So once the accounts that have been opened, and the Ultimate Beach opened a sub and primary account, if we upgrade that, that is happening within that frame, within this set of accounts, uh, they were within the amount that was expected as a company operating within the petroleum industry.
Yeah, now looking at the two accounts, we have the, the primary and the sub-account. They are different in both account holders, uh, Kofi was the primary signature at the main account. Oremas, I'm like, is also the primary signature of the sub-account. Look at these two, that one, you, what, what, what was that rise in order to raise issues of concern? Seeing that they are different in terms of voice, but they also link into the main account.
Okay, let me put it this way, thank you very much, Oremas. So, uh, the accounts were opened based on, uh, board resolution from the board members of Ultimate Beach. So the account, they write the instruction from the main company itself, that's Ultimate Beach, but it's it. So it's on the back of that, that we actually, whether, because the company then will choose who be signature on which account, as a reason why they appointed, uh, Nana as signature on one set of accounts, and Oremas as signature on the other set of accounts. We are not privy to that, because we don't sit on there, I mean, we don't know why they did that. But at least, the, the primary authority came from the board of, I mean, Ultimate Beach. So we still, I mean, don't see, uh, much, or they didn't see much, I mean, issues at that time. That, based on the information available, which was at that time.
Yes, the final part is, uh, in terms of their locations, uh, you've also indicated that it's also part of the requirement you know of an account, where you, uh, also have the location of the account owner. In terms of Oremus, uh, does he qualify his location in the Gambia? If so, where and also, uh, what is his location, based on the information that he gave? In order to qualify the signature to the sub-account?
Okay, so for, so we are talking of, uh, under Ultimate Beach?
Yes.
It's not coming to Apogee yet.
Okay.
So under Ultimate Beach, we are still looking at Ultimate Beach as the company that we are dealing with?
But not the individual?
The individual as a signature?
Yes.
Uh, will also be looking at, okay, where do you live? Or what, I mean, based on your primary, um, where do you live? We know that most of the time is outside the country, but when it comes to the country, where, where is primary account, I think it gave some addresses that, uh, that, that, that we have on record. And the same applies to Nana. Okay, so within the Ultimate Beach, I mean, uh, concrete, uh, we look at it from that angle, and definitely, they also have, uh, somebody local here, uh, who's also a Gambia, that's part of the team that we are looking at, so we look at it, I mean, totality from that angle.
Yeah, yes, I want to request, uh, for Henry to help us, with the, the, the bare address or your current address of Oremus in the Gambia, the full address, and also specific place, and also Kofi. So, uh, for the, the main, we want to know their full address in the Gambia, but here, since you made it that they don't have both outdoors, in the outside and also inside. Because the reason why I'm asking, we want to ascertain, uh, this people. Yes, I have put it to him, so I want you to provide us the, the full address.
Okay.
The location of, uh, Oremus, uh, and also Kofi, in the Gambia, their full address, and also where they are located, based on information for, for the community, yes?
So, it's there? Okay, so we'll finish that, I think, so this part of the document that we sent, that I can? This is, it's the document that we presented?
Is it?
Yeah. No. No, let it follow us, uh, let it follow us, yes. Looking at the document, I think, uh, it's only the ID. If you look at Apogee, because here, the link, the link of these two is, uh, Apogee, Oremus, uh, has not had a specifically coordinated Gambia. You know, it's only the ID card, the details, whatever, and also name, full name, signature, you know, company stamp, and also officers, these are things that we have, we want, uh, because I won't say it.
Yes, but you, okay, I think there are a lot of, there are a lot of numbers.
Because the IDs that we have is their, is their national IDs, not address located to a country.
Because you have the document there, you have the address?
In the Gambia?
Yes.
Yes, chairman. Uh, what they have, what they have submitted is Fajara M. Sexo. Fajara M. Sexo where? Fajara M. Sexo.
It's specific.
It's not specific.
Well, but, but, uh, they are, they are, they have, they have. But then they can probably go by, uh, what is submitted, the department has submitted.
That's not an issue. Yeah, yeah, we have, actually.
Can we allow them, it will be those who, as far as their addresses are from China?
Uh, on average, uh?
Arimos and, uh, correct.
Yes, uh, upon average, maybe, if this breaks up, it, it, this presents a very good opportunity for us to also table an issue within the industry. Okay, uh, response to, uh, let me say, define addresses, addressing system in the country. If you, most of the markets that we're operating in Africa, this is a major challenge across all the markets that we're operating. In terms of address systems in most markets that we're operating. And I think it will be a very good opportunity for us also table across the need for as a country. Anywhere we, we, we go, we raise this issue, for the country to come up with, let's say, defined addressing system. So it becomes easy to locate, there are times that even for us customers that we have been lending money to individuals. Trying to identify them, where they live is a challenge at times.
Yeah, but that's the point, uh, one address we are, could be, uh, be sent.
Arimos.
Arimos and?
Arimos and coffee.
And coffee?
And coffee, yes.
Okay, so for, um,
Arimos.
So on the Ultimate Beach, of course, that's another, that's another, that rather than the company represented is, uh, uh, AMI Highway, Cololi, KSMD, the Gambia.
But Cololi, that was who? Arimos?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's the company's, I mean, location that they provided to us.
The company's address?
Yeah, they provided.
And actually, I thought it was.
Yeah, so that means that the company is, yeah, so the company is telling us that anytime we need in any of their offices.
Yes.
When, when we come to them at this location, they should produce there for us.
So Arimos is for Ultimate Beach?
Yes, as and I were dealing with for Ultimate Beach.
Ultimate Beach and for Arimos. How about you, like that? Before the second, uh?
Coffee.
Coffee, yes.
Yeah, so coffee, both coffee and Arimos.
Yeah, great, right?
So, so, coffee and Arimos?
Yeah, so both coffee and Arimos are, as we speak now, based on this account opening on the Ultimate Beach. So Ultimate Beach, they came under the umbrella of Ultimate Beach. Uh-huh.
Both of them?
Both of them.
Are relying on one address, both the primary and the subaccount. They rely on one address that you have, you have also read. Have you ever, as a bank, visited their, their, their premises or their address?
Uh,
or any of your staffs visited the, the premises or the address given? Because here, they don't have time to push it, it's all about.
Sorry, can you answer that question?
No, not yet. Okay, personally, I have done it then, I asked the account officer myself to find out, but the account officer should go out, after engage the account officers and find out whether you have made, I mean, any direct visit to their locations.
His answer is no. Yes, any supplement?
Yeah, because I, I, that was why I wanted him for that, because here, there are various addresses. But he is now saying that they are only relying on the address of Ultimate Beach to qualify Arimos. Address of the Ultimate Beach to qualify Coffee. I wanted to know, uh, based on this, the separation of their records, what, what, what specific addresses were slotted in both the main account and the subaccount? Difference from, uh, taking the address of Ultimate Beach as a backup of the two? Mr. Chair, my colleague, one who likes to ask some information.
Good afternoon, and thank you. So when we are opening an account for a company, you know, we do not ask for the individual address. It's the company address, because the individual may not be in the company tomorrow. So on the official document, is the official address of the company that we take note of. Because your individual address will appear on your respective documents. But the company will say, the individuals may not be there tomorrow. So the, of, the, for the, the official address of the company, that is what we take note of. When we need, we go there. So you'll find that what they gave in, in our official account opening document, it is their official address for Ultimate Beach. And that is also what is featured in the system, you know, we capture also in the system. So this, I mean, Heidi, Cololi, is that where the, the company has their address. That is what is noted here. Thank you.
Okay? Chairman, is that a, a supplement?
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, okay, as you mentioned, you, you normally go to the company, the address, the physical address of the company. So then I believe your bank would have actually visited, visited the premises of that company?
Yeah, can I please come here?
Yes.
Yeah, that, so, that, that's why I didn't mention it, you know, that the account officers who go out depending on their need. Okay, and as a customer, depending on the situation, they come to us most of the time. So in this instance, the, so the, the account officer, depending on the situation. Then, let, um, as I, as I, as I'm sitting here, I have to then do those checks with the account officer, whether they've gone there physically or not. Normally, if it is, uh, an, an account where we are giving out money, we are lending to the customer, that is an obligation for us to go and know, I mean, the company's office, where they are. But in this, in this instance, they are coming to us, they're coming to us to open the account.
Yeah, but, but, but CEO is important, because I would rate them as an important client. Very important client, looking at the volume of transfers they have with your bank. I think because of their status, your boss would have actually visited their headquarters.
Yes, agreed. Uh, but as a, from my level, I need to do that checks with my, uh, the account officers. I don't have that information immediately, I have to check with the account officers, yeah.
No, if I want to continue, you have a supplement, or, okay, keep us.
Okay, thank you, chair. Uh, on their statement, on their statement, did you, did you have the statement that you? Because I think I,
Yeah, I have number, yes.
And there, that I want you to rectify.
Okay.
Then if you go to the, where you have the shareholders.
Okay.
See, the ultimate beneficiary owners of Ultimate Beach Logistics, Gambia. I'm, I'm, here, I leave this in the gun, if you look at, if you look at the shareholder.
Yes. That's ultimate beneficiary owners.
Yes, in Ghana.
Yes.
What you put in Gambia.
Okay.
I think you, this is your statement.
Yes, can I please clarify?
Okay.
Okay, so Ultimate Beach Logistics in Gambia, uh, is owned by Nana Coffee and Makwado, eight percent.
Eight percent?
Somna Jawara, two percent.
Yes.
And then Ultimate Beach Logistics Ghana, ninety percent.
Ninety percent.
So if you look at both Nana Coffee and Somna, they all own less than ten percent. And per the K Y C principle, we have to go, take further for shareholders who are owning more than ten percent ownership. That's the enhanced diligence that we have to do. So then, that, then that led us to Ghana, to find out, okay, Ultimate Beach is owning, uh, Logistics Ghana is owning is the ninety, ninety percent owner of Ultimate Beach Gambia. So we then have to look at who are the owners of Ultimate Beach Logistics in Ghana. So they are the ultimate beneficial owners of Ultimate Beach Gambia. Because they own not more than ten percent of the holdings of Ultimate Beach Gambia.
Okay. Then my, my other question, during, when you answer, my honourable colleague, you've mentioned in petroleum business, where a company to have a business of thirty million US dollars. It's, it's normal, because of the nature of the two business. My, my concern here is, uh, even though that is the case, the company must be realizing to operate. In this case, was Ultimate Beach operating petroleum product in the Gambia?
Uh, with, uh, on average, uh, on average, just to understand based on information that we have. Yeah, so in this, I mean, uh, company registration memo, it is, I mean, it's indicated that they are supposed to be dealing petroleum products. When it comes to the licensing regime, that depends on the, based on the, uh, pushing document that was released by the, how do we call it, the sector, I mean, ministry. Uh, that also fed into the sort of arrangement that we see, I mean, pan out here. So in terms of this, uh, we have not checked, we, we have not cited the license for. Yeah, so based on the information that is available, yes, I mean, it's related to trade. Petroleum products, yes.
In the Gambia?
In the Gambia, yes.
In the Gambia.
My question.
Do you have the license?
Thank you. So what determines, uh, what they are doing is when they are opening the account, the documents that they submit. And the nature of business is usually captured there. So at the time of opening the account, it was very clear there that they are into petroleum products. That is what the authorities give a clearance for. And, uh, as far as we are concerned, as far as, uh, our regulations, you know, they made that. So for instance, if they are doing something different from that, their account can be blocked. But they were doing, based, what they were doing was basically the, the documents. So yes, they have, you know, uh, registration and clearance to, to, to take part in that, uh, product that they were doing. And it was based on that we actually, uh, we were working with them. So those documents have been submitted to us.
Will you, will you agree with me? Ultimate Beach came to Gambia in relationship to create energy. That was licensed to trade in petroleum product, but not, but not an ultimate beach. And you see the link is, Ultimate Beach or the half of, uh, green energy also linked with crossbreed. This, this is it, this was the, this is the channel. Ultimate Beach came to create, uh, create energy. Create energy also linked with cross and, uh, crossbreed that have license to trade in the Gambia. Trade petroleum in the Gambia.
So, so, yes, let me just take this last one. So what we looked at, the first account we opened, which is Ultimate Beach, documents specify that they are cleared to operate in the petroleum market in the country. That's the documentation, it has that.
You have that document?
Like that was, yes, on the account opening.
Can, can we have those documents?
Okay, uh, yeah, can I please ask something, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it, it, it's licensed, I mean.
Yes, so, uh, the point that, uh, you want to, uh, is that when it comes to, uh, petroleum products, uh, it's something that one cannot hide in his pocket and bring into a country. It has to come by huge cargo ships. So by the time that we see petroleum products coming into a country, we are convinced that the authorities of that country would have vetted that cargo before allowing that cargo into the country. So definitely, we are convinced also that through the port, through the, uh, national authorities, all the checks were done before allowing their products to come into the country. And that we, we don't have the, uh, let me say, expertise in that field to vet those things for, uh, in terms of allowing those cargo into the country. That, I would say that we have to test to verify that for you. But we know that the products came into the country and they were vetted before the products were allowed into the country by the relevant authorities.
So you have all the vetting documents of those relevant authorities?
No, we don't. By all that I'm saying is that by the time a product of that nature is coming into the country, it is not something that somebody can smuggle and put in, uh, hide it. It is something that cannot be hidden, for a cargo of petroleum products enter into a country, it cannot, I mean, hide, that shit cannot hide before it come into the country. Well, I want authorities would have permitted that shit to come into the country.
Uh,
Yes, on average?
With, with, uh, on average, no. Uh, yes, still now, I am in the opinion, Ultimate Beach don't have a license to trade petroleum product in the Gambia. But since you have mentioned that, okay, the authority have cleared them to operate in the Gambia, I would definitely hungry request you to help the committee with those documents. Yeah, uh, on the other is one.
Can you please specify?
On the, on the license, licensing?
License.
Trade license?
Trade license.
Yes, of Ultimate Beach.
Uh, is that supposed to be part of the submission, uh, for the installation, for the, for account opening?
No, for account opening, uh, no, we don't normally ask for trade licenses.
Trade license?
No, no, we don't normally ask for trade licenses.
Okay. You, you, but is it not in your interest to confirm whether the account for the purpose in which it is open, it is legal or not? Because the legal status of trading in particular sector is to give allowances to corporate. Is to give allowances to corporate, so is it not in your interest that somebody is opening an account with you claiming to operate in a particular sector where the authorities of this country has not given you an authority to operate? Is it not in your interest?
Yeah, it is in our interest, uh, to know our customers. And in knowing our customers, we try to understand the value chain of the industry. And in terms of understanding of the value chain of the industry, our understanding is the fact that it is, uh, the O M Cs who are on the ground, who actually distribute the products locally, who are actually, uh, supposed to actually get trading licenses. who are actually, uh, supposed to actually get trading licenses. For the institutions who are bringing the products into the country, I'm not sure whether, uh, like them. So all these areas, areas that we rely on the, some of the documents that are in public domain, by what we, how do we call it?
And the Ultimate Beach logistics is not the sole owner of that product. Opposite who is the sole owner of that product, they applied for their unit and they were given unit. These people were trading in petroleum product in this country. They operate in this country and they're supposed to register in this country. Where they serve as middleman between the traders and the OMCs that is here to establish. But they trade in this country. They are not the ultimate owners of that product, that belongs to us. But what we are studying here is, the account was opened on behalf of a company to trade within a particular sector for which they were registered, or they were allowances to do. And that is the interest of your company to be able to know that whether their status is legal or not?
I'm, I'm, yeah, I mean, what I mean, I mean, I mean, can you please help us here? In account opening as, as a business entity, I think you must submit your, your business registration and your G P S, where these documents are, which is what they are asking. Because who opened an account as a company? You must simply submit your business registration and your G P S, where they know. Yes, so business registration was something, and I've written this here. The business registration to go to corporation to start business, I've written that.
Yeah, but this is people with the trade license.
I think this is understood.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, we have, we have the sense we got to compromise business here.
Not, uh, maybe the chair and the vice. What they're asking for is, you know, to be engaged in petroleum products sales in the Ghana. And there's a particular license they give you, which is different from your business registration. That's what they're asking for. The business registration is fine, you are just a business under the company's act of the Ghana. But then once you do that also, you are also required to get a license to operate in the petroleum sector. That, that, that's what they are, that's what they ask for.
Yeah, so that's the bit that I said, from our, I, what we try to do is understand the value chain. And based on our understanding of the value chain, we, we, because we have the customer. I said the products are in a tank farm. And that tank farm was explained to us that it is a bonded warehouse. So that means that the products, as long as they are in the bonded warehouse, are not yet entered into the country. That is our understanding of, I mean, the concept of a bonded warehouse. So at that point, they have not yet come, they have not moved products into the country.
That is a, not quantity. That, that is a, not quantity. The bonded warehouse is a, not quantity. Here, we are referring quantity. That, that is, they have a lot of voices, then they are saying petroleum product. I'm not referring to a, the bonded, the fuel at the bonded warehouse was a, not quantity.
That's your question, please.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't give you that many questions. Yeah, all, all this thing I was, I was asking, I get it from this question, from my main question. I don't have them yet.
After the, you lose.
Did you question, ask someone more? You were thinking all that long, I'm afraid.
Yes, after then. Yeah, but I still have many questions.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, chair. Now, I still want us to clear this thing. Now, we only know that, but U B L presented their business certificate when they were opening the account. But when they opened the account, they were trading on petroleum. These are the forms that they were loading into, into that account, the main account, I mean. Now, I just want to make it clear for me whether it is we do diligence that you, you did when you were, when they were opening the account. And the allowances to operate in the sector was not submitted. So I think there is something fishy there, so I always want us to clear that. Where it was fair or it was good for them to open their account with you, trading in petroleum while they did not submit any license that wanted them to do so. So I want us to clear this.
Now, in terms of the licensing regime, uh, with your kind permission, I, I, I wouldn't want to go into the technicalities involved because I'm sure there are other people who are more vested to deal with, with that. But from our end, who, who try as much as possible to understand and to know the customer. And based on he understand all the customer, who then, uh, perceive and then deal with the customer.
Now, I just want you also to tell us, how was you unconvinced that U B L would be able to handle this 36-point-something metric tons of, of oil in the absence of a license? How were you convinced?
Once again, with kind permission, this is once again, there's an issue of technicalities involved in the licensing regime, uh, and with kind permission, uh, on the same area as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, chair. Now, coming to the, to the subaccount. U B L opened the main account with you, where they are loading their forms. Now, they came to open a subaccount where they will transfer the forms from the main account to the subaccount. Now, why are these securities where noticing?
Uh, that is the preparation of the board of, uh, Omen Beach. The board has a prerogative to determine who is the secretary of its account. Thank you.
Is that a no, a normal procedure when it comes to the banking regulation?
Yes, the board, whoever the board elects to be the secretary is normal in my banking position.
This side, yeah, on the, on the same, on the, on the, there was, uh, on this, there was a question, supplemental, yeah, about the, uh, the subaccount. Because whenever you have a main account, our understanding is the subaccounts actually are related to the main account. That's our understanding.
That is, come again.
If you have a main account, you call it maybe O1, and you have a subaccount, O2, O3, for different reasons. Our understanding is that those subaccounts, there is a relationship with the main account in terms of signatories, in terms of ownership, in terms of identity. So can you, can you confirm that, if that's correct?
Uh, enough one relationship.
I understand that.
Straight on Ultimate Beach.
I understand that. But the signatories on the main account are not the same with the signature on the subaccount. Is that very normal in, in, in the banking sector, in, in ECOBank? Is that normal?
Yeah, there's no one, yeah.
Now, uh, chair, I, I think what we're going to do now is let's request some documentation to give us maybe at least five examples in ECOBank, where the main account and subaccount have different signatures. So let's request for them to give us five examples where the main account and subaccount signatures are different. Yeah. Accounts where the main accounts and the subaccounts are different, the signatures are different. Let's get five samples from, from them, and we can continue.
Okay.
Uh, can I use now, yeah?
Sorry, uh... Do I need to start on this side?
Yeah, 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 thank you, chair. Basically, my question would be, regards to, uh, account issues. Um, how do you, how can one confirm if a person is indeed trading a particular sector or is it...
If the owner is part of the, yes, of the, of the...
Oh? Same?
There was an answer.
Are you that was a, that was a...
No, no.
No.
See this, uh... Yes.
Yeah, there are times that some clients who open the account through their lawyers and normally they, I mean, they would use their lawyers' address as their initial addresses. So in case we give them, who go to their lawyer's place and their lawyer will produce them. Thank you. Okay, I think the way you are looking at is the account that was subsequently opened by Apoji. But the earlier one that we discussed, basically, is the, uh, the one for Ultimate Beach.
Said that they were using the same...
Okay. Now, I said, I, I mentioned that Ultimate Beach opened the primary accounts and opened a subaccount. And the subaccount was named Ultimate Beach stroke Apoji.
I want to say this, the, the addresses are different. And you said you stayed at the same, uh, when you opened the subaccount, same digital payment. And addresses are essential for, for how we... Why, and why you do that, when you were...
Okay, but at that point, honorable, it is Ultimate Beach that introduced both the money and oil amount. So at that point, you were all under the umbrella of Ultimate Beach. So you were using the Ultimate Beach address. Until we had, uh, uh, Apoji opening a separate account in their own, I mean, on their own merit.
And it not everything, we did, they are always separate.
Everything separate, yeah. That's some, I mean, separate incident for you there to replace.
Yeah, thank you very much. So basically, my question is, how do you confirm trading, the trading source, for example? For example, how do you confirm that capacity is indeed trading in oil or some other monanimous activity of trading?
Okay, basically, we know the main players can be, uh, professional investors. So once we see the activities in the account, we tend to just see who are those bringing the funds into the account. So if you look at the statement, you see names like Castle, you see names like ECU Energy, you see names like NP Petroleum, you see OREX. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. So for example, if you go to F I U report, uh, on base, for example, there's the one called Fullness SDN on a transfer by Abukei, for example, of 1 billion, 314,000 dollars, for example.
Which was I very referring to, right? F I U report. We're, we're not in the...
This is an example, by example, this is an example, it has to be trading, trading source, by example. Uh, this is Abukei, by example, with, with this kind of monanimous money. So can, are you saying that, like anyone can register a particular name that has to link with energy or oil? And, uh, from your, from your head, you'll just ultimately confirm that this particular entity is, is like, should be licensed to trade? So, um, why we're asking this is to ask to your internal compliance procedures, for example.
Yes, so, uh, we, by virtue of making that submission, you are looking at materiality. Okay? If you look at the names I mentioned, OREX, Castle, NP, ECU Energy, OREX, all those names are the ones that are pushing huge amounts of volumes into this account. Yes, there may be some other names, I mean, transactions or credits into the account. But the question is, how material are those amounts relative to the full term of that account?
Okay, so from your head, you can only determine that one stays in flow of cash, that's what you're saying. Not from the initial setting of the account, so... But come again. Like, from what you've said, you can, you can like, you're, you're open to create account for any, any entity that maybe is dealing in oil or some other monanimous initiative, for example. So you only determine the, um, veracity or authenticity of that particular entity when the funds start flowing, that's what you're saying.
So I think of, at the point where the account is being opened.
Exactly.
So the memorandum, the memorandum indicates that the board, the open license, uh, has been set up. The board, I mean, the board members have set up the company. So if you are saying you are in the petroleum industry, before you, I mean, you be the first, you can be the petroleum industry. You definitely have, have a certain customer that's who are in the petroleum industry. So do some, I mean, checking, some, do you know this name?
Okay, so from your own compliance, you, um, how do you, like, ascertain this particular things? What licenses I place from your head that can ascertain that this particular entity is dealing in this particular, um, for example, uh...
Yeah, so the business registration is the primary document.
That's all you require?
Okay. So is the primary document?
Yes.
Then, who then look at the other players in the industry? Because we have established players who talk, now, do you know this name? Okay, so that one, based on the interactions with the other players in the industry, they don't give us information at all. This name is a name that is coming to the market to this business.
Okay, so from what you've seen, from this particular scenario, um, what, what information if you gather regards to this particular Ultimate Beach?
Also, uh, but the information we gathered, uh, that they are coming to, I mean, bringing petroleum products to the... So that's the information we gathered.
From what sources you gather this information from?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, so... Oh, yes. Yes, I think you can, because you know, we have us, which exhaust the first part.
So now we move on back to the subaccounts. Um, so can you explain, for example, the nature of a subaccount, what's the nature of a subaccount?
The nature of the subaccounts? So the subaccount is a account that is opened by a primary account owner. So the sub-account is a account that is opened by a primary account owner. To enable the primary account owner to find or flag some activities.
Okay, thank you. So maybe, so I'll just, let me just talk with some of you, I'll just hand you the other something. So my question, my next question would be, what is the PPD and how do you, how can you take that into account? For example, you mentioned that the PDN said, I don't know. Yes, he has some political application from his parents, for example. So with regards to issues like this, how do you treat that differently?
Yes, thank you. So the difference is in respect to the regularity or the type of information that will request from such a account for such customers. And also the intensity of the management of your account. And the fact that these accounts have to be reported to the board. The activity that was on these accounts have to be reported to the board on a, a, a reporter. So for example, on a quarterly basis, we go to the board and say, okay, you got so many accounts. This number appears, nine years on this balance sheet, or activities on this, but constitutes percentage of the title and the deposit. Then the board also will ask questions.
Do you have any questions? And monitoring is very important on accounts, we tell. So now, if you go to paragraph four of our analysis, what did you mean by the two companies being a front, organic companies?
I'm again. Okay, with paragraph of the picture.
Paragraph four, okay. Analysis, sorry.
Uh, okay, no, no.
Yes.
So pay two or pay one?
Pay one.
Pay one?
Yeah. So my question would be, what did you mean by the two companies being a front, organic companies?
This one, I'm not giving you that, okay?
That's ours, that's, 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 that's ours. Okay, very much, yeah, good job. And thank you very much again, I mean, in regards to the money laundering program you have, can you please explain to us your anti-money laundering program? In the company, anti-money laundering?
Okay, so the program actually starts with, first of all, educating every staff on issues around money laundering. And she also requires that periodically, in this case, every year, as minimum once a year, every staff is required to go through a course on money laundering. And the process was to try to actually understand the source of funds that are coming in. And to identify potential areas where there are funds that are coming in from fictitious activities. Such as maybe from funds that are meant for terrorist financing or from other bad businesses here.
How do you monitor this, as well as money laundering, how do you monitor it?
Thank you very much, I know. It starts with the KYC process. That's knowing the customer. And during the whole process, first of all, identifying the players who are going to operate the account. That's where we have to do a search. We have a platform where we do search on the names, the signatures, all the board members. We are getting or screening, we screen those names to ensure that those names are not on the sanction list. Those names are not having any adverse media associated with them. And then, secondly, at the point where transactions are taking place, we are looking at where the funds are going to. Luckily, we are leaving the country, the platform that we have also checks the destination of those funds. You see whether they are going to jurisdictions which are, quote unquote, questionable jurisdictions. And then the system will flag it if it's going to have questionable names or questionable jurisdictions. And then we have to then verify, except before we need those funds to go.
And you made mention of doing a project on the individual that didn't mention in the account holders. Or the accounts considered that they are part of the list of people that are connected to money laundering. In case it did not happen, they are not endless. And yes, still there are individuals that are coming into the account. What is to convey to say, we have to go and see whether this is not part of money laundering? So what, what kind of thing do you use to, to check on that?
Yes, so we look at the source of funds. Is it coming from a line of unexpected source? Okay, so if it's an individual who says that the money is coming from my salary. So the question is, the money that is coming in, is it coming from this salary? Or is it coming from another source? If it's a company which is says that I'm doing a business of petroleum, the money comes from the petroleum industry? These are the checks that would be given. And once we see that the money is not down from the petroleum industry, we then ask for further information. And then the person will clarify, if you are satisfied, then fine. If you are not satisfied, then we then try to do some more checks.
But in the case of this, this three companies that we have, that are probably with you, was there any contact on these issues that you communicate? Because if you look at the business aspect of it, it's like the supply is for Apogee. And Apogee also is also linked with ultimate as sub-account holders in your company. Was there any contact in this? Because you made mention that you always want to do this search. And Apogee now are dealing in petroleum. What, what was it meant for, when you were doing this investigation, what did you do?
Yes, so we went to the normal check-ins. And then when we did the normal check-ins, then along the line, that was somewhere last year, along the line, we had a meeting with, because besides our internal check-ins, we also liaise with the authorities. And normally, if the authorities, I mean, get some hint of information that they want to share with us, they normally can share with us. So we had along the line, interaction with FIU on this particular name. And also the Gambia Police. And it was a meeting somewhere last, in November, December last year. So they tried to get more information. And we were also asking them for additional information on these, I mean, names. So based on that interaction, past at that time, after those meetings, we then had to now engage and then get Oremas to initiate the process of opening a registered Apogee as a separate legal entity in the country. And for which it was able to actually go through that process.
And if you look at the ultimate, the, the open account with you before December?
Yes.
And now you are telling us that you, 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 you had a meeting with authority to inquire, involving the police, where there was any money laundering happening in this. Before December, before the meeting, what happened in between?
Or before?
Before Apogee came, came, came into this name?
The money was all, all related alone. I mean, on the basis of it, I mean, we were monitoring it. And the transactions were within, I mean, regular amounts, still in the, within the expected amount based on what had been defined on the KYC document. So later on, if FIU came in and we had the meetings with them, together with the police, then at least we got more understanding of what is happening. So we then advised them, okay, instead of having this and cooperating under a sub-account, I mean, they should try and then open a separate, I mean, primary account in the name of Apogee, which was done subsequently.
Why was the police and then the authorities, let's say, want to you after your meeting with them? What did they tell you to do, what did they ask you to do?
Basically, they... Excuse me, please. No, they didn't answer to you at the time. My colleague was in the meeting, so that's what just confirmed it. She was in the meeting, I was in the present.
So you tell them that they qualified that there was nothing like money laundering, but did they do it? Did Apogee before you opened the sub-account, or did they advise you to open the sub-account?
No, no, they didn't advise us, okay. No, the sub-account was already, already running. But at that, at that meeting, it was just, I mean, asking questions, we provided information, we also asked some questions during those meetings.
What did they call that meeting, why? Was there any suspicion, suspicion of error?
No, who didn't call for that meeting? It was the FIU that came and then initiated the meeting.
Why, why was that meeting, why? Because you were in that meeting, yes?
Yes, so normally, they said, I mean, it's just trying to understand, they wanted to understand the nature of the company and the business that they were doing with us. So they called for the meeting that, initially, FIU came first and said, oh, well, we want to have a joint meeting with the police. So I then had to get my team to go for that meeting. My compliance, the girl and then the business owner who went and had that meeting. And then after that, I mean, at that meeting, they didn't tell us, I mean, to separate them, no advice came. But based on our further checks from that meeting and the information in that meeting, we also asked them for more information during that, those meetings. So then, okay, let's get the customer to separate the company, or the separate company, this is a separate company. And then also the separate companies, then yeah.
Right, I mean, this seems a player to me, because I mean, as you rightly mentioned, Apogee was operating with you.
Yeah.
They were inviting FIU came and then also the police. They were inviting them to work during meetings with you.
Yes.
Maybe this is something.
Yes, so whatever they smell, we don't know. As I know, I'm just being told as an FIU report, which has not been shared with us. We collaborate with them, and we maybe have information, we share with them. Because I don't know, no one party has full visibility of what's happening within the country. Based on whatever position that they have, they have previous information that we, we are not, I mean, we not have. So from our end, until those meetings, I mean, took place, and we also, I mean, we're also asking and asking around for additional information. We didn't actually have much, and it's from there that we work additional information. And it's okay, better off having a separate legal entity to handle this company.
So they get back to you?
No, they didn't get back to us, we don't have any report from them, we don't have any report from FIU, we don't have any report from the police. I mean, we met about one or two, but yeah, but it was a long meeting.
Okay, based on your programs, how often do you almost update them to make the current values on the ground?
Yeah, okay, this.
How often, often do you know you complete your programs, based on the current values?
It's, it's an ongoing, let me say, situation. Depending on the situation, who updates, depending on the situation, who updates.
So it's only how many necessary, so?
Yes, so we review, I mean, the situation on an ongoing basis. Daily, weekly, we meet, we have meetings on various accounts, we have meetings on monthly, quarterly meetings. And at every such event, there's a material event, then we look at it and then take a decision.
And all this is international best practice?
Yes. Yeah, it's a live international best practice, that you review your, I mean, your KYC, you review your customers, you review everything on a continuous basis. And once you see something, right, additional information comes to your knowledge, comes to your attention, that you have to just look at it and then take a decision to improve upon the situation.
So you mentioned that your staff have been trained on this. Are it an internal or are they training outside to, to, we are this, well-prepared on this money laundering issue?
Yeah, we have both internal and external training. And that is mandatory to pass that exam at least once a year.
Mandatory by who?
By the internal policy, make sure that you're right, I mean, go to your boss, minimum, at least once a year, you have to pass that exam and pass it. It's an online program that you have to new.
So what criteria that you use to identify high-risk customers? When it comes to money laundering, what, what criteria do you use to identify high-risk customers?
High-risk customers are basically character factors, or their peers. Their political exposure, presence.
Political exposure, yes.
Like, for example, unfortunately, our, like, our own members here, unfortunately, yourself and your relatives. Your relatives, after multiple years, have become peers. Number two will be their jurisdiction. Their jurisdiction, the order is the high-risk jurisdiction. The high-risk jurisdiction also requires a lot of work to it and, I mean, onboarding stage and also at the point where transactions are taking place. The transaction destined into a high-risk jurisdiction. It requires a lot of checks, double check before the funds are released. But come, it comes to international transfers.
So you made mention the positions are there. In case you want us once, what do you want to do?
Get down across.
Engage an inflow from the positions? And you ask question, if you, if you are not satisfied, what do you want to do, what next do you want to do?
When we ask questions, first of all, we check, oh, this, based on your stated turnover, spread that turnover on the account and the sources is in line. If it's not in line, we ask, ask for additional information. If we are not delivering the source of the information and we try to get, I mean, evidence or explanation. If it is, if it is not, if it does not align, and then we try to persuade you to stop. And we first want to persuade you to, to stop this category of funds coming in. But if it persists, then we have to then advise ourselves and then sever the relationship.
So you've raised the, you've raised the source?
Yeah.
Okay, I think it's time. Okay, I think it's time.
Honorable, I have a question. I just want clarification, would be, are we possible to second session?
Yes, it's called division.
Okay, thank you. Okay?
Yes.